Evening and welcome to Detroit City Council's Special Study Session for April 24th, 2013. We have the roll call, Ms. Bennett.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Mayor Proton Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
It's received notification from Councilman Campbell that had a little complication to his surgery on his ankle and he won't be here this evening, so. I will move the resolution to excuse him in a minute, but I did get a phone call from Councilman Teetz that he is stuck in traffic, traveling four miles an hour on 696 for the past forty-five minutes. So he will be here shortly, so we'll just wait for him. But I will propose the resolution that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Campbell at the City Council's Special Study Session for Monday, April 24th, 2013.
Support.
By the Chair and supported by Mayor Proton Fleming that we excuse the absence of Councilman Campbell. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bennett?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Fleming.
Here.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passed. And hopefully, Councilman Campbell gets well soon. I'm sure he's watching us this evening and we wish him well and look forward to him returning at the next council meeting. Our first order of business is the discussion item C1, the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 annual budget and three-year budget with a conclusion of the overview of the 2013-14 budget. So I will turn the meeting over to City Manager Brian Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and welcome back to the second half of this budget session where we rebalance with the resources of the day and look at some of the, all of the strategies that we identified a couple of months ago and go through this process, identifying those areas where we've been able to accomplish the budget, at least from a financial standpoint, as well as look at operational efficiency. So this is the second half. I've sort of revised the outline to accommodate from the last Monday to the night where we'll have a presentation by everyone's favorite presentation, I'm sure, by Mr. Hootery of the Capital Improvement Plan, and then a few, little discussion on special revenue funds, many of which we've already talked about Monday night, but there are a few more that Mr. Darling will go over, as well as the debt service funds. Look at the three-year budget and five-year forecast, as well as fund balance, which I know everyone is interested in where we, where it looks like we're going and how we're managing the resources into the future. And then we talked at the end of last Monday night, the Store Village Nature Center have some common conversation on their requests for funding. Representatives I know are here from both groups tonight, and we've put a few slides in as well that we can sort of go over. As well as the Downtown Development Authority, which I know we haven't had a lot of conversation on, we did meet with the Downtown Development Authority last week, reviewed many items, as well as the budget. There is a budgetary issue that would be forthcoming in this upcoming fiscal year that we need to discuss tonight with the City Council, and we're prepared to do that. Then look at the budget changes that we've at least discussed throughout this process, and then a quick summary of trends, and then dialogue, as well as the date of adopting the budget. So that's the outline, and that's where we're going in thirty seconds or less. We will start with Mr. Hootery on the Capital Improvement Plan.
A little more than thirty seconds. Thank you for having me, Mayor, Council. We were shocked a little while, a few months ago, about capital, and this is kind of a more in-depth discussion of capital, specifically for our 13-14 budget, and a quick look at our six-year capital improvement program for capital projects. Our revenues, about 12.2 million, a little over fifty, or a little more than 50 percent of that comes from our capital loan grade at 1.53, about six and a half million, really two large components, large grants, about 21 percent, and operating transfer, say, in about 20 percent, and then there's some minor parts that make up the rest of the revenue. Our expenditures, on the other hand, about 13.8 million. As you can see, the different categories, and I'll go into a little more detail in each of the categories, and specifically in the capital, or in the public works construction is where the majority of my time will be spent. So in order to make up the difference between our 12.2 and our 13.8, we're using about a million and a half in capital fund, fund balance, which leaves us with about 9.3 million at the end of our proposed 13-14 year. Looking at our three-year budget, tax rate's pretty consistent around six and a half million. Probably the one that fluctuates the most is all of the revenues, and that's primarily due to federal-funded projects. In the 14-year, we've still got a little bit of the Transit Center left, and then the out years, we've got some federal funds coming in for some of our larger projects. And I forgot to mention, in your book, there are, there's text sections, there's Excel spreadsheets, there's maps. All the information that you see here is in your budget document in some form, both for the proposed 13-14 year, as well as the six-year capital improvement. So there's detail on each and every project that if you wish to delve into it further. But in the end, really what probably important thing is down in here, we're proposing about a million and a half in fund balance expenditure over the next three-year period, with an ending fund balance in 2016, about six and a half million. You saw this chart previously, we updated this one to coincide with the three-year period ending in 2016. You can see, previously, we were on a pretty steep slope down with our fund balance expenditures. That has kind of tapered off a little bit, and we're at the million and a half so level. But our expenditures still exceed our revenues, so we still are dependent on capital fund, fund balance use to balance our program. And really what that tells me is that our wants, our needs, our desires exceed what we pull in as revenue. So we're, we want to do more than we can fund with our revenue. Looking at kind of the major categories in our capital fund, land and building improvements, 2.6 million, largest component in here is the Transit Center, what we call a carryover. It's a multi-year project, so it is going to carry over into the proposed 13-14 year, about a million six, but it is 100 percent federally funded, so that really is just a, it's a million six expenditure with a million six reimbursement coming back. And then you've got some public works type improvements. Equipment, about $600,000, and primarily for more public works equipment, as well as some security upgrades and network upgrades for the police department. This apparatus replacement, and it was talked about by Chief Drolson, half a million dollars for the fire truck replacement, I think he said, it's quite old. This 8.8 million public works construction, this is where I'll get into a lot more detail here real quick. And then finally, the other category, 1.3 million, you've got 600,000 library materials, which is books, AV-type materials, debt service tax refunds, and street lighting at 100,000, which is kind of the LED upgrades. As we did with the operating, we did meet with you previously, and you had some conclusions, and I guess I like to call them directions or directives, what things you would like to see us look at when we were preparing our capital budget. Primarily is you wanted to maintain your infrastructure in a fair good condition, and then also you did not want to see any use of capital funds to balance the general fund, both of which we accomplished for the proposed 13-14, as well as the six-year capital improvement program. One of the maps that you see in your book, our major road fund, primarily what you'll see here on Square Lake and Waddles, we're proposing to do overlays on all six miles of that over the six-year capital improvement program. We've got two miles up here, which we're just awarded, and construction should start on those overlays next week. The county's Livernoy project started up this week, goes from Long Lake up to Avon. And then we've got some large widening and reconstruct federally funded type projects on John R., Livernoy, Dequinder, Rochester coming up over the next six years, which we've got some large funds that will be flowing through our program. Yeah. Mayor.
We get some questions asked about, you know where they're going to start the Livernoy's project?
They're supposed to start on the south end.
They're supposed to start on the south end, that Long Lake?
Yeah.
And go north?
And they're supposed to go north, and they're talking, I haven't heard yet if they've determined, they have talked about doing intersections on weekends to try and avoid work through the intersection.
Excellent.
Still, kind of, they've had pretty marginal weather this week, I mean, 35 degrees and snowing's not real.
Good construction weather, so they're doing what they can right now.
Major road fund, these are the proposed budget amounts for the six-year capital, and there's pretty good variation here from two and a half to 6.2. The two and a half is in the current year, and when I talk about drains, I'll give you a little idea of why we're a little bit, what looks like low in major roads this year. The 6.2, on the other hand, is kind of high because of a large expenditure towards federal dollars on the major road projects. So a good 80 percent of that comes back as reimbursement with federal dollars. So looking at 13-14, specifically projects that we're proposing in the budget, the finishing up the design and the right-of-way work on two John R. projects, Long Lake to Square and Square Lake to South, you'll see some, or contract amendments coming before you within the next month or two from, with the city between Orchard, Hills and Climate. The design works kind of been sitting on the shelf for several years, waiting for a construction year to be identified. We do have a construction year identified for the first mile in 2015, the second mile in 2016, so we met with OHM, gotten them back on board to kick that back off and bring it back up to current standards, get it ready to bid through MDOT and all that good stuff. So there's some additional work that's been added since it was originally scoped in '02, so that was when the design actually started, so it's 11 years in the making. So there have been some changes out in that section, John R. Major road overlays, an additional two miles on Waddles, tri-party, about $400,000 in work on county roads, that will all be concrete slab replacements. The NHPP, we talked about a little bit previously, which is the National Highway Prevention Program, which is a kind of a new federal pot of money, and what I did was included 250,000 as a match to that program of what we met this past week with the county and the other member communities that have roads that qualify outside of straight-up county roads. If it's a project that is on a county road, the county is going to provide the match. If it's a project on a qualifying city road in Troy, the only major roads that qualify for NHPP that are city majors is Rochester and the West End of Waddles. All the county roads qualify, but our city majors, those are the only two. So we, it does look like we're going to pick up a couple hundred thousand dollars, and know later in the year how much exactly, but the match is going to be county match. So what we would look at doing is taking that 250,000, moving it into the industrial roads to help us do all those projects on that list there, because we've got a few more projects that we would like to complete, then we have the funds available. That 250 should be able to get us through the rest of those. And then 50,000 for crack sealing, 100,000 for some additional slab work on city majors. You've seen this many times before as well. What we did is we did a composite, we looked at combining majors and industrial in the one chart, and it really gives us kind of the same thing you've seen before. We're on, in our major road fund, if you strip out the matched to federal dollars, you strip out the PE, the right-of-way type dollars, and just look at what construction dollars are we spending on city roads, it's about a million seven with that 250,000, if you throw that in, you're looking at almost 2 million. On the high, high end of this chart, we are trending up, and we do, over the next six-year capital improvement program, we do anticipate staying well within the fair range, maybe even bordering on good. County roads are kind of going the opposite way, and that's something to talk about a little bit later. Our local roads, 265 miles of local roads, about one-third of those are asphalt, two-thirds are concrete, when you go over four miles are gravel. This one, I don't map out all the concrete slab locations because it's more an annual type exercise, we look at Pacer ratings, I might as well not talk about Pacer ratings tonight. We look at Pacer ratings, as well as engineering a DPW. Hello, inside joke.
Where did that come from?
So we're, annually, that program is developed. Realistically, what we do is we fund local roads at 3.1 million. What we try and do is look to identify asphalt pavement overlay subdivisions, because unlike slab work, if you're doing an overlay, you don't want to go out and do one street and sub, you want to try and pick an area, do that subdivision, get in, get out. Slab work is more a spot replacement type operation. So we identify the overlay location, and what we made from that goes to our slab work. For 13-14, what we're, we identified as the proposed project location is down in Section 36, which will finish up the streets outside of Lovington, where we're doing, currently doing the Storm Shore project, we're going to redo that road as part of the storm project. We'll overlay the rest of the roads and then be out of that area for 15, 20 years, just some minimal maintenance type work. The rest, about 2.7 million, will go to slab works, concrete slab replacement on the local roads, which is a very healthy number, a very small portion to the proposed SAD paving. We're still waiting to see if that moves forward. Same thing like the other funds, if a project like the SAD paving were not to move forward, those funds would be most likely slide right into slab work to pick up some additional slabs, and then some crack sealing type work. If we look at the condition, and we are funding at the 3.1 million dollar range, so we are trending down. We do believe that over the six-year period, we're not going to get into the poor range, we believe we're still going to be within the fair range, and we're going to be bordering on poor, with majors, we're kind of bordering on good with local. A lot of that has to do with mileage, mileage and miles of concrete road, and we've got a significant amount of concrete roads out there that were put in relatively same time, require a lot of work, but we are putting a significant portion of our local road allocation every year towards those concrete roads. Our drain fund, we've got a couple of large projects. You can see in the proposed year, biggest one is the Aquatic Center right at El Pac, it's about a 2.3 million dollar project, and that one, we were able to acquire, what I guess I'd call it, we were able to win, a $985,000 federal grant through NOAA, through the GLRI, which is the Great Lakes Regional Initiative. So almost 50 percent of that project is federally funded. Projects out for bid right now, construction on that will start sometime after July, so although it's 2.3 million, and that's part of the reason why you saw a decrease in the major road, proposed major road amount, which is kind of an offset, it's capital, when we look at it, it's kind of a composite, we look at all of it together, trying to get to a number that we can deal with. And then we've got a couple of projects out at the golf course, one being a stream bank stabilization project behind Camp Ty, as well as a removal of the large culvert under the access drive, anyway, that's back there. There's an access drive off the back parking lot, it's got some, it's in need of some repairs. Typically, what we fund the drains is about 200,000, pays primarily for DPW to do detention base of work, fence replacement, pump replacement, that type of stuff. Our sidewalk fund, this one, we do go through and identify locations throughout the six-year period, and really what it is, is the major road sidewalks, the city is split up into six sections, local road sidewalks are split up into 12. DPW sidewalk program rotates through the city, doing these areas, they do sidewalk replacements, they do ADA compliant upgrades to the ramps. Every time we do a project now, we spend a good chunk of money and a good time, a good deal of design, trying to make things ADA compliant, whether it's removing ramps, placing new ramps, upgrading ramps, what have you. And what you see here, typically, we funded this program at a half a million a year. DPW looked at the program, every year, when you don't have enough money to complete your, what you need to complete, you fall a little bit further behind. They got to the point, they said, well, if we had an additional 900,000, we believe we could get back on schedule. To try and incorporate 900,000 into one year, it's a little difficult in the capital fund, so what we did is tried to spread it out over three years, and that's, you see the 800,000. And about 40 percent of what we put forth in the 800,000, about 650 is what we kind of estimate in the budget as local road sidewalk replacement. About 40 percent of that comes back as reimbursement or payment from residents for sidewalk work done at their homes. And then about 140,000 of the 350 in the three out years. One of the things we talked about after we met the last time is, Council had pretty clear direction of you wanted to maintain the structure, you wanted to use capital funds to balance the general fund. One of the other things we picked up with, picked up on was that you were, you wanted to see improvements to roads, you wanted to, for us to try and kind of think outside the box, and how could we get more bang for the buck? So what we met, we met internally, we talked about it, and we looked at some of the worst roads we have are county roads. One of the worst areas that we have is the Crooks at 75 interchange. We have 280,000 that we've identified as tri-party money that we want to use at that location. We said, you know what, that'll take care of the intersection, but it's not going to take care of much north or south of that intersection. What if we were to propose an extra half a million dollars as part of a transfer, a million dollar transfer, transfer from general fund to the capital fund to do additional work on Crooks Road? So that was, that was the first half of this. The other half a million, we looked at, okay, if we're going to spend a little extra on county roads, why don't we spend a little extra on city roads? Could we, why don't we accelerate one of our overlay projects? Because what it does is, by moving that project up, it frees up money in a future year, it's a domino effect. If we move something up in one year, we can move something in to infill. So it helps regardless of how we do it. But that's a, we met after we had discussed capital with you the last time, and one of the options that we came up with was this million dollar transfer from general to capital, and specifically to try and bump up the Crooks Road project, and what procedurally would have to happen is we probably would move the intersection work, as well as this half a million in additional funds, move it to July 1st, so it's all within the 13-14 year. We would move other tri-party work in place of the Crooks at 75 to get that done by June 30th, because we've got 280,000 proposed to be spent by the end of the year. So to avoid losing any money, we would have a little bit of a shuffle of projects, but in the end, we would have, we would be out on Crooks one time, we would set up staging one time, rather than trying to do the intersection now, come back in two months, set things up again. The inconvenience to the traveling public is, it's a factor when you do large highway jobs. We did it when we did Rochester, Big Beaver. One of the things we looked at was what is the cost to the traveling public when you're doing these types of projects? The more traffic you have, obviously, the more expense there's going to be. So this would be a way to get a much larger project, a much, a project that the area between Fountain and just north of Square Lake is really the only area left on Crooks that's not been improved. County's done north of there, the county's done south of there. We would do the intersection, so there's kind of a minefield in between that would not be done, and then the overlay would help us accelerate, and kind of clean up that area. One of the other things with capital is it's kind of a puzzle. Up in the northeast corner, we've got Livernoy, we've got Dequinder, we've got John R., we've got Rochester, so every north-south road that people called and said we weren't working on years ago, we're coming to do those now. But we've got overlays we're trying to fit in as well. So we need to get those overlays done either before or after that project, you need to try and avoid those years, and once we get to 15, it's pretty hard to avoid them, because we're out there through almost 19. So if we can accelerate some of those projects, get them done beforehand, it helps us out with those construction projects in the future.
I think, I think that makes sense. So why can't, can we talk about Livernoy's and Long Lake for a second? That is a county project somewhere this year, is that?
That is the overlay.
That is the?
Long Lake North.
Are they, I thought they were coming down?
We are, with tri-party money, and that would be the location, if, if we, if we went ahead and this, this half a million transfer, the million dollar transfer went ahead, the locations we would look at for the 280,000 that we have currently programmed would be the crosshovers on Long Lake, east and west to Livernoy, and then Livernoy south of Long Lake. That would be where we would go and push that money to, to get it done by June 30th.
Okay. That makes sense to me, that if they're doing Livernoy's north, and they were going to do it east and west and south, that they should do it at the same time also.
And one of the other things we look at is, I mean, not only bang for the buck, but trying to get into an area that everyone hates when you just, over and over and over and picking and choosing and moving here and there. If we can, the more we can try and consolidate our construction areas into areas, geographic areas, and get it done, and rather than coming in doing bits and pieces, it drives people nuts when we're out there, and every year they see barrels. So the more we can do this and try and coordinate our work with the county project, the better off we all are.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Yes, I like what you're doing there, moving more money to the general fund there. But you're not specific on the slab replacements, I understand you can't be as specific, on specific roads that you're going to do the slab replacements.
On majors or less?
On, I'm thinking John R. specifically.
Well, we are specific on the tri-party that we've got programmed for the current year, as well as 13-14. There'll be new tri-party, the county works on the federal fiscal year, so they're in October 1st, as is MDOT. So their tri-party program typically comes out in February, we get to know it's January, February, something like that. And that's when we would look at probably the Dequinders and the John Rs. to do additional work. We do have some money from the LDFA that we're going to do some work at the Big Beaver John R. area, about 52,000, which would be after July 1st as well, because that area could use a little work as well. So we do have a little bit of money there, but what we would look at is this NHPP money along with the 2014 tri-party allocation, trying to bundle that together to do a, kind of a larger project again, rather than smaller.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Tom's going to take over from here.
Everyone did see his folders already.
Yeah, you didn't, didn't see, look at it.
How many sticky notes?
He never referenced it. He never referenced it.
He never looked.
We knew everything.
Thanks, great to be back again, Mr. Mayor, Council. We're going to go ahead and I'm going to start us off by just kind of wrapping up some of our special revenue funds that we hadn't already previously talked about. We've already kind of talked about the refuse fund and the library fund. Again, special revenue funds are funds where we receive money that are earmarked for specific purposes. The first one is the Community Development Block Grant, or the CDBG fund that we'll talk a little bit about. And here to talk about that is Cindy Stewart.
I'm the administrator now for CDBG, and these are federal funds that we receive every year, we have to apply for them, the county administers it for all the cities in Oakland County. We average about 145,000 a year, and we can only put them towards certain things. The home tour program, which is we take care of our seniors and persons with disabilities, and we do their lawns in the summer, spraying, and then we do their shoveling in the winter. And we probably, right now, we have about 82 people on the program. So that money, there's public service funds, and then we also have money that can only be used for road improvements, for storm drains, things like that, and they can only be used in one area of the city. Well, this is the first year they've moved that up, we've got two sections now, but it was always Section 36 that we could only use that money. And we did Milverton Park, you all know the improvements we did in Milverton Park. I work with Bill, so when we have to apply, he, you know, looks and, you know, decides what we have to do. We've done flood drain improvements, we've done road improvements, everything within Section 36. They do allow us to hold some money over, because $100,000 isn't enough to do a project in one year, but we can budget for it, and then save for 2010, 11, and 12, all that money could go towards a flood drain or a road improvement project. They're getting a lot more strict, I think we even one year had about four years, but they are getting... But they are getting very strict, and that we do have to get the money off the books and turn in our receipts, so they will reimburse us. So we're trying to watch that, and right now, road improvements, we've got, and that's why you see there's extra money in there, more than what you would, it's, those are from past years. We have also been able to, if, when Milverton Park was finished and we had still allocated some money in there, they let us reallocate, but that has to go before city council, we have to have a public hearing, but they're pretty lenient, as long as we follow all the guidelines for it. But that's pretty much, we're starting off, we have our contractor, we're going to start mowing and doing spring cleanup for all our seniors, so they're all happy. And that's about it?
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll talk about our local and major street funds. Again, we receive gas and rate taxes from the state, which is earmarked specifically for local streets, and some that's earmarked specifically for major streets. So we'll talk real quick about the local streets. As we can see here, we're projecting our revenues from the two thousand thirteen budget to the two thousand fourteen budget. Revenues were budgeting to increase about seventy-four thousand, or about four and a half percent. Our expenditures, which are really transfer outs to reimburse the general fund, because all of our expenditures for major local streets, as far as the maintenance of those, as opposed to, to Mr. Hootery's capital improvements, are through the general fund, and so these transfer outs are to reimburse actual costs incurred by the general fund that are eligible for Act Fifty-One funding. Again, at the end of two thousand and fourteen, we're going to project this, our fund balance to be about two point two million. And it's basically the same thing on the major streets, again, public Act Fifty-One money, projecting revenues to increase about four and a, four point three percent. Again, the expenditures are transferred to the general fund for the maintenance of our major streets. Also, in, in the Act, the major street fund can transfer money to the local streets, and as, as Bill told you, that we have a, a lot more local streets than we do major, so the expenditures are higher. And then for this year specifically, we're budgeting an extra six hundred thousand to cover some of those street projects in the capital fund. Then at the end of fourteen, we're projecting our fund balance to be about two point two million. Okay, the budget stabilization fund. This is an internal, a special fund that the city established a few years ago. It's really ruled by chapter fifteen of the city code, which really mirrors Public Act Thirty of nineteen seventy-eight. It's really designed to, you know, to, to act as a stabilization, as it says, for any years that we have some fiscal instability, and it's designed really to try and steady our service delivery, so we don't just drop all of our services. We're able to try and mitigate some of the effects of that. It should be noted, though, that to appropriate any money out of, out of this fund, it takes a two-thirds vote of city council to appropriate those funds. We don't really have any activity in this fund as far as using any money. It's basically some interest that we believe that we're going to be drawing down through the year. And ultimately, we believe that the end of fourteen, we're going to have a fund balance of about one point five million. It should be noted that through chapter fifteen of the city code, that this fund balance cannot exceed fifteen percent of our general fund expenditures anticipated in any budget year. Okay? This is about three percent, so you got room there, as far as meeting that condition. Next is the drug forfeiture fund, and I'd like to invite Lieutenant Cristel to maybe talk us through this one, please.
Thank you. The drug forfeiture, as you can see, we're kind of conservative. Obviously, last year was a little bit higher. We did have an officer, an officer assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team because of our, you know, shrinking police department, which you transferred back to the road. We also had an officer in a different unit of the DEA, so our numbers are a little bit lower. Unfortunately, with drug forfeitures, you never know exactly how much they're going to be. Some years they're very high, some years they're, they're low. We try to ballpark it there, so about a hundred and nineteen thousand's what we're looking at. One year, when I was in our special investigation, you know, we had one case that was four hundred thousand dollars. So like I said, you don't know where it's going to be. We like to go conservative here. Probably one of the questions that come up is where did that two hundred and six thousand dollars? That is, we had, the drug forfeiture money used to be in our operating, and that's why it says operating, transfer in. So that was transferred in, it's now its own special account. We have our own drug forfeiture account, and we use it for those things like that fifty-two thousand dollars, which is supplies for our special investigations unit, for our detectives, surveillance equipment, and those types of issues. And the other ten thousand dollars there is, we're actually getting two canine dogs, and we're going to use that for, for purchasing the canines. They're both about ten years old, and they're about at their, the age where they're, it's time to be retired.
That's great. Again, it's a brand-new fund for two thousand thirteen. Ask us to establish the fund. It was previously accounted for in the general fund. Again, we wanted to create its own fund because of the size of transparency. This is what was the accumulation in the general fund, just to start this one. Thank you. Next, we'll talk about debt service a little bit. Should be noted that we're not, we're proposing to keep the millage rate the same as it has been, at point seven oh mils. And we're going to be talking about the general debt service fund, which collects from this millage the dollars to pay off the debt on proposal A, B, and C. Again, proposal A was a streets project, primarily on major streets, Crooks, Livernoy, Dequender, and Long Lake. Proposal B was passed by the voters for the public safety and city hall addition and renovation project. And proposal C was the recreation, including the community center project. So we'll talk a little bit about the schedule of principal and interest for these debt service requirements, and any future millage requirements that we're going to have going forward. So let's go ahead and, and start. Again, if we look, revenues are pretty consistent, as any of our tax-based funds are, ranging basically in around the three million dollar area. It should be noted, then, that here's the debt service requirements for both A, B, and C. Again, that's about three point one million to three point two million, both thirteen through sixteen. So this is basically our three-year budget here, in our budget requirements, so it looks like we're right on track. Again, this is a debt service fund, and as such, it comes to an end, right? At some point, at some point, we pay off the debt, and, and the millage goes away, and, and we're debt-free. So in a way, it's, it's a sinking fund. So the perfect scenario, right, is I collect enough money, and at the end of the day, I have zero fund balance left, right? The last penny was paid on the last debt service payment. So this is really what we're looking at, going all the way out to two thousand twenty-two, which is the end of the debt, and what we think the millage is, and you can see we're going to start to come down, we use fund balance, basically have been for the last few years. In fact, two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, we were almost using too much fund. We were using about a million a year, which, if you were trying to land that aircraft on the aircraft, you'd fall short, you know, the water. So again, because our decrease in tax rates, we, we did approve the point seven mils, and we think that's going to last through sixteen, but then dropped down to point six, and it's, the idea is to keep us using about, we're budgeting about a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand a year of fund balance, as we steadily gear down to try and make this two thousand And we'll talk about the three-year budget and our five-year forecast. Again, you've seen these numbers before, this is summary, it's already been presented in each one of these funds, both on Monday and this evening. Again, you can see that, you know, for the most part, it's relatively flat across the three years. The, the difference in two thousand fifteen is really coming from the capital fund, as we don't have federal, really federally generated projects, that keeps that up about between the thirteen million to twelve, thirteen million dollar range. So that's why that's a little bit lower in fifteen. Again, same thing. Okay, so the general fund, real quick, again, revenues are relatively flat. The expenditures, again, our primary expenditures are in public safety for the fourteen through sixteen, around the thirty million dollar mark. And again, if, between public safety and, and streets and drains parks, it's about seventy percent of the general fund's budget. Should be noted that we are budgeted to use, are proposing a, a budget of using fund balance for the next three years, of around six hundred thousand for fourteen, eight hundred thousand for fifteen, and about one point four for sixteen. At the end of sixteen in our three-year budget, our total fund balance, not unassigned fund balances, projected to be around thirty-two million. Let's look at a five-year forecast, then. It should, so again, in total, we're really trying to balance out our revenue and expenditures. It does look like we are using a little bit of fund balance, again, as we go through the years, but overall, the revenues, which are indicated here, are relatively flat, with, with a little bit, fifteen and sixteen, they're increasing like point eight, five percent, so very little increase in, in that. In two thousand eighteen, we're projecting about a one point one percent increase in revenues. Again, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues even in eighteen, and you can see the effect that this, that this is having on unassigned fund balance. So you can see there's a steady progression of use of fund balance and affects unassigned fund balance at the same time. Part of a, let me say that. I think I had some extra. With that, I'm done with the five-year forecast, you know. Just a little bit of history. Any questions?
Can we move back?
How far?
Mayor Proton Fleming, if you want to say.
No, thank you so much. But this time last year, we were sitting in this meeting, we were looking at the five-year projection, where we're going to be, where we're saying we're going to be bankrupt.
There was a picture of Mr. Engler, I believe, at the end of one or something, so yeah...
We're, so we're, we, you know, that made the headlines at the time, you know, we're going to be using up our unassigned fund balance. So this is a much better picture, a year later, we're, let's let it out.
You know, you bring up a great point, Councilman Fleming, and keep in mind, when we start getting into five-year forecasts, this is if we do nothing, right? So this is really what this tells me, is that we got a little bit of work to do to try and bring those revenue and expenditures closer together to, to, to balance that out. But we are clearly, as you mentioned, on a much better pace or outlook than we did a, a year ago.
Having said that, the projections include a bunch of unknowns. The ERA program was an unknown. Vacancies, without the vacancies or the ERA program, if you factored those in, it may be a very similar graph. And the other thing I want to make is, this is if we don't hire one additional police officer or anything. This is if we did the same thing in eighteen that we have today, right?
If we do nothing.
If we do nothing.
Mayor Proton Fleming?
Yeah, let's, someone else may have a question. Just to clarify, if we do nothing, we are doing something, though. We're, we're putting together a budget that shows we're filling those empty positions and so forth, and this does reflect filling the open vacancies that we have and the plan that we have.
Correct.
So to say that we're operating the way we are today, we're not. This reflects the plan of filling all those open positions that we've budgeted a lot ago.
Correct. Which takes us to the police department to nineteen seventy-nine levels, if we fill all of the vacancies. So this doesn't include adding any public safety from nineteen seventy-nine levels, unless I'm missing...
Well, let me, and let me say one other thing. It also includes six million dollars in fund balance from last year because of the ERA program, and, and all the vacancies that were created as a result of the work that you all did, not to mention a projected two point three. So when you just do the math, that's above nine million dollars. That helps that boost the bottom line for everybody because of the work that you all have been doing and did with the concessions and with the, no, the ERA was a big part of it. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Can I ask you what fourteen point eight percent is? Or is that fourteen point eight?
Million, that's million. What percent is that of? Well, if it's, use fifty, fifty million, so ten percent's five, twenty percent's ten.
The, the good news is that slide last year looked really bad. And, and Councilman Fleming's point, you know, made the paper. So, you know, I think the, just the, the fact that the groundwork that was laid by previous councils and the city belt tightening that's gone on has really done a great, great service to our, our fund balance. And, you know, with regard to forecasting, I, I've had this conversation a few times, with the forecasts and, you know, how that played into last year's slide, you know, in unprecedented economic times, it's awful difficult to put together extraordinarily accurate forecasts. And we do err on the side of caution with those things. Being in sales my entire life, the boss comes to you and says, you know, "How many, how many franchises are you going to sell this year? You know you're going to hit fifteen. He's going to tell you twenty, you're going to forecast ten." So that comes into play, so kudos to the, to the...
It's certainly easier to forecast when you have a level, it's hard to forecast in here.
Yes.
That's, that's a hard, but as to go in the future, I think...
Well, put, more questions on...
Okay, so the next part of this presentation is the historic village and the nature center, and we'll get to the DDA after that. But I wanted to provide a piece in here and, and some slides and information, where if we start at the historic village, you all know when it was part of the city, the, the funding levels that you were at, and then in two thousand and twelve, things changed. We put on here, two thousand and thirteen, the request was seventy-five thou, or the appropriation, I guess, was seventy-five thousand, and the request this year is a hundred thousand. Lorraine's here to go through some of these numbers and, and sort of give you what's happening.
Next one, please. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us back. We wanted to give you a little clearer picture of just the operations, and, and to clarify that the budget, revenue, and expense figures you see on the slide have the core services removed, because the cost of utilities, maintaining the buildings, ensuring them and providing security are there, whether the facilities are open under the operations agreement or whether they're closed. You still have those. So we just took those out of the picture for this view. As you can see, the budget for the village was decreased dramatically when the Historical Society took over management on the five-year agreement in two thousand and eleven. We received fifty thousand dollars that year in startup money, which went to consultants to buying computers, to basically setting up shop, because the Historical Society had always been a project-driven nonprofit, not a nonprofit business with employees. The seventy-five thousand dollars you have provided for the current fiscal year has been put towards marketing. We have young college graduates who are technically savvy, who are giving us a better online presence, increasing the social media that we use, online presence as well as traditional media, and to a more coordinated grant-writing focus. We have increased our total earned revenue as well as our donations. We're up about, you know, almost seventeen percent, which sounds really good, but that includes the support that you gave us. So this year, because of your investment, we will break even in our operations budget. The question is, why are we asking for an additional investment this year? We're treading water, to be very honest with you. We're, our staff is strained to the limits, there is no frills. I assure you, there have been no raises, no bonus, no benefits. We have increased our volunteer hours, we're doing thirty-five hundred hours a year in volunteers, but we're just staying where we're at. We very much want to hire a person whose total focus is development, not only annual donations, but legacy giving, a coordinated plan of building relationships with donors that are going to pay off now and in the future, and also will bring in money so that we are further sustainable. We also, at the behest of our auditor for the last two years, need to have additional eyes on our books, just to follow proper fiscal management. We need to hire a businessman... We need to hire a business manager. We would also transfer to that person the responsibility of taking care of facilities rentals and giving that business unit in our operations plan a shot in the arm so we can further increase the revenues from facilities rentals. Finally, we have not addressed our collections at all. And we are historic facility with between eight and nine thousand objects in the collections. Some of them have not, literally, when Mr. Boardman lost his job and walked out of the building, they have not been touched since he left. And therefore, in our business model, we would like to hire a curator. That allows us to still keep our budget below what it was within twenty-nine-ten, continue to increase our earned revenues and donations and grants by about ten percent a year. We figure that between ten and fifteen percent is a good target for us. Obviously, it varies year to year, just like your federal funding has. Next slide. Following what you've heard from the other city departments, what we're looking is to rebalance our operational approach. One of your calls to us last year was to come back with a strategic plan. One of the new board members that we recruited has twenty years' experience as a professional strategic planner. He helped us organize a strategic planning work group in January, and we are in the midst of strategic planning, using his professional services on a free basis as a board member. That plan will be finished in late summer, and we will come back to you with a report. We want to implement those changes in the strategies that we come forward with the strategic plan. One of the things we want to do is use some of those funds that you provide to us to invest in better technology in the same way that the city is to reduce costs and generate additional revenues. I was at a meeting today where one company was saying that the forty-six percent of online donations are coming from brand-new sources, so people we've never had been able to tap before. We also are returning the village to full-time operations. That is open Monday through Friday with weekend hours during the summer. And I would like to do some additional surveys to see about adding some evening hours so that we can target our young adult audience and people who work during the week who can't come when the museum is currently open. So in conclusion, what we're... And the other thing we want to do is work with our cultural partners in cultural stores as well as in the local community, like the Troy Nature Society, to find additional ways where we can collaborate and develop strategies where we reduce our costs by working together and generate additional revenues. What the Historical Society is really saying to you is we would like to work with the city as you go through your redevelopment and expansion. The society and the village have always been, if you will, a post-it note in the community, an unrecognized gem, that thing that we drive past and always wonder about. We'd like to change that and be an active partner so that when people consider if they should live or work or recreate in Troy, they say yes, because that's the place where the Troy Historic Village is. So we thank you for your investment and your consideration. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So the budget increased on this previous slide from last year from two ninety-nine to four hundred, is that...
It is. This year, it's two ninety-nine. What we're projecting for the new fiscal year, we're on the same year that you are, so July one, we would go with your investment of a hundred thousand, we'd go to four hundred thousand, yes.
I remember the conversation that we had last year during the budget session was, at least my impression of where we were headed is, you know, it's a one-shot deal. Here's an infusion to help along another year, but let's not see the budget increase by that amount next year. And as I'm looking at the numbers, boom, there it is, you know, you've increased by a hundred thousand. And in fact, you're asking for even more than we contributed last year. And, you know, I understand the infancy, well, you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Kishnik a while back about this, and, you know, we spoke about the fact that it's kind of like moving your teenagers out of the house. You know, the first year, you know, you still have to kind of feed them a little bit, you know, you don't want them to go hungry. But at one point or another, they do kind of spread their wings and they're off on their own. So, you know, I understand that concept, but what's the exit strategy? How does the city of Troy get out from under, and how long is that going to take from us feeding that funding to you?
You have a nonprofit that's eighteen months into that operations plan, and we are still... We got through, as we said, the knothole in that first year. We're a half a year into the second year. We have a five-year agreement with you. If you have any... And you are all more businessmen and women than I am in terms of working in the corporate world. If someone came to you and said they were going to do a startup business, I have heard that the infancy for any business is five years. And that if you can make it through that first five years, you certainly have enough experience and you've weathered enough storms that you have a real grounding on where you're going as a business. Is that true? And I think that we are in much the same position. We have a five-year operations agreement with you. We have the opportunity to renew that with you at the end of five years. I would suggest to you that as we go through that five-year development, and I'll look towards the board members who are sitting here, that we'll have a really solid idea. We've learned a tremendous amount in the last eighteen months, and we continue to learn every day. I think in this first go-round of the operations agreement, that's really where we're getting our feet under us. What this proposal asks for is the ability to accelerate the process, if you will, to put the staff people in place so that they truly have the time and the resources to get out there and do their work. Right now, I would love to be out in the community four days out of five soliciting sponsorships and writing grants, but half the time, I can't get away from my desk because there's no one else there to answer the telephone.
Follow-up? Follow-up, if I could. You mentioned a six-day, six-day-a-week operation. And also the use of technology to reduce costs and increase revenues. A, can you be specific on what type of technology you could have to help reduce that? And also, is six days a week a necessity? A necessity? In terms of the starting...
Monday through Friday is, I think, a good goal. First of all, one of the things that we've heard is in our own patrons coming here, only open three days a week to the public. We are now servicing school groups many times five days a week. I believe that with the infusion of funds, we can expand our hours to draw in more public, to bring in more members, to participate in more programming, to generate more earned revenue. So that's why you want to expand those hours. We've also learned from looking at other museums, other kinds of museums, science, history, art, does it matter? That those facilities which are only open nine to five do not draw young adults aged twenty-five to thirty-five because they're at work. So you don't build a relationship with them as members, as donors, as advocates, as givers. So you have to get that engine running, or spiral, if you will. Some museums have found by adding a Friday night option, even if it's only a couple times a month, that they suddenly become a date night for young adults looking for a cost-effective way of socializing. Museums and facilities like ours are becoming gathering places, exactly the kind of places that your residents are asking for in their visioning. They're saying, we're looking for a place to congregate, to meet one another, not just to learn about history. We have marvelous discussion about current political issues brought about by Ben Carson's comments at the National Day of Prayer on Saturday. The adults who participated in that said, we'd like more forums like that, but we have to be able to offer them at different times. So that's why extending the hours back is really important.
Currently, the city, regardless of what we decide as far as this additional funding, will cover the expenses of the buildings, maintenance, the property, and so forth. So the buildings will be maintained regardless of this. So I think the question really is, is we're acting like a foundation handing out a grant to a nonprofit and trying to decide if it's a good use of the taxpayers' dollars. And I guess like Councilman Henderson said, last year, we asked for a strategic plan, and it still hasn't been produced, but we're being asked for more money. And that's where I have a tough time saying yes, because I think the question, well, how is this any different than last year? And furthermore, and just give me one more... The second part is, you bring up the business question, well, writing a business plan. Well, when you're not making money, you don't hire additional employees. And I think that's, you know, we're talking about hiring three additional employees. Well, we have a full city of people that are... We could say we could have more furlough days removed, and we would have the employees that we currently have in the city spending more time on the job, able to do the services that we promised the citizens right now. And so, I mean, how... What's the compelling argument to say, Doug? You know, the hundred thousand dollars you spend here for these new employees is more important than a hundred thousand dollars I could spend on all the employees that the city currently has to give them more, you know, remove more furlough hours? I mean, I think that's the issue I have.
The one comment I would add back to you. I understand your comparison of saying you are in the position of being a foundation, providing a grant to a nonprofit. I would suggest the city is taking their funds that they have collected from their citizens and putting it back in their community to create a cultural destination that serves their community. You're giving your money back to yourselves. You are investing in something that you already own, that is already a resource in your community, and what you're doing is giving it a shot in the arm so that at a seventy-five percent reduction from what it was in two thousand and nine, so that it can continue to be that active contributing part of your community rather than a shuttered facility, and there are enough for rent signs in Troy, that sits on the corner and becomes really a place where your police officers are going to have to respond to more calls for inappropriate behavior or vandalism.
What I had mentioned when we spoke about this on Monday was basically my need for a plan. And I remember we talked about the strategic plan last year. So I think in a perfect world, it would have been great to have that information here today so we could discuss a plan way forward. And I understand that it's not free, or there, you know, people don't, just don't really walk in off the streets and offer their services. So I understand that there's things that you want and when they become available. Like, you know, I think that the fact that you're going through the strategic planning sessions at this point and expect to have something at the end of the summer is a positive because I think we need to see a plan. But, you know, I'm kind of looking where you came from as well, and we're looking, we're focusing on the expenses that are going up, but we're kind of excluding from the conversation the revenue that's also gone up. We're looking at some, a group that started without the need to create their own, generate their own revenue to sustain themselves, and in the same number of years have been able to really bring revenue to the table in a way that I'm sure was new for everybody that's been involved. So, you know, I'm not really inclined to just, at this point, you know, shut everything down, for lack of a better word. But I think just like we're asking, you know, all of the departments to give us some sort of plan for the three years, I think that that's going to be really important for us at the table because otherwise, we get in a situation where it's a one-year thing. So we're going to cross our fingers and hope that the stars align in the next year, and you can do the strategic plan and do all of these things. And then when it doesn't happen, we get to this all-or-nothing thing. I think it would be, you know, definitely easier for me and hopefully easier for the rest of the group if we had more of a plan.
I'm not to interject. When we provided our annual report to the city, and you all received copies of it, one of the documents included that was a strategic outline. It was a three-page document. So without going through a complete strategic planning process, which normally takes many months, we did, in a small group, meet, and the board approved that strategic outline. So at least we had a primer to work with. And quite frankly, we recruited Mr. Zuzza in July. He was approved on the board in September, and by January, that group was meeting. So we turned it around, and we're not through our fiscal year yet. So we turned it around as quickly as we could. We were grateful to have him come in as a facilitator with professional experience and also then to recruit those volunteers on our board and in our community to participate in that work group.
I guess I'm wondering, so I, and I know you have done some planning, obviously, some planning because you've made great strides since this was no longer a department of the city. But I guess in terms of what might make it easier for the rest of council would be, we're really only talking about the next year in this conversation. So last year, we kind of had a similar conversation, and we're only talking about the next year. I mean, would it be possible to present something to us that really... Now, I've just heard you say in the comments that you just made, five years. Well, that's a different conversation than one year, and that's kind of how we're dealing with it. So maybe it would be, can't go back and change what's happened in the past. But if it's really feasibly five years that you see now that you've done this, that you would really need to have our support in some way, or we would have these discussions, you know, it might be better to talk about that, I think, than just...
That would be very fine.
One year at a time, if anything else you see is that way, but...
I guess let's go around the table, and then maybe we can talk a little bit. Mayor Prokotan Fleming?
I think we're on the same page as far as doing the strategic plan. And just back to your presentation, you talked about startup companies generally taking five years to become profitable. The difference in this Historic Village and a startup company, those are loans, and they're repaid. You know, the people are funding. You go to a bank, if you're starting up a company, you're trying to... Your loan, like here, this is a donation, like a grant or something, we're not asking for it to be paid back. So with, that's the difference in this nonprofit Historic Village versus a startup company looking at a business venture. But you have made great progress in that your revenue went from nothing to two-hundred-and-forty-eight. And I assume that two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand in two thousand and eleven, twelve, including the fifty thousand from the city, and the two-ninety-three included the seventy-five thousand from the city. But you still erased over two-hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
The question I have, and I don't recall from the audit, Mrs. Campbell, the... How much was really from program generations? Because that's where you're going to, you're going to get some grants, but I'd like to...
Right. Our public and school groups brought in ninety-one thousand dollars.
Of the projected two-ninety-three this year, estimated ninety-one thousand. So two-hundred thousand, that is still coming from donations and grants and so forth.
Correct. We had our first year of operation at twenty, July twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. We had the second half of a Presky grant that I wrote.
Right.
That was twenty thousand dollars. We reapplied for the grant this year, and because our total budget had gone down, the percentage, we only could get ten percent of our budget, so we were awarded it. We got fifteen this year, we'll get fifteen next year. So we've also applied for an IMLS grant of fifty thousand dollars. We worked on that, it was due in January, but they won't issue their awards until November. We also have in line two or three other grants that we want to apply for. We've just finished a new sponsorship package. We are working very hard with Alan Kerlik and Kelly Services and Suburban Collection on the car show. We're ramping up right now to make that a larger fundraiser. That is an important, what we want to have is our stellar fundraiser every year. So there are a lot of strategies already in place that we're trying to build.
Do you want to follow up?
Just about. So I think my suggestion in your strategic plan going forward... So I'm thinking, my suggestion in your strategic plan going forward, I'm interested in working on that, is you look at more opportunities to generate revenue within the programs, what you can do to market that you've got a jewel in the community here. So how, if it's, how do we generate revenue from the programs and projects there, rather than just donations? I think that's where maybe you need to focus more attention.
We are actually looking on two things right now, distance learning and also outreach programs. We've also talked to Superintendent Fowler about additional products and services. I, I didn't have a chance to open my email because I was out of the office today, but we have a pending proposal to Flagstar to develop a new curriculum guide, and their pilot money would allow us to test it, and then that could be part of our regular earned revenue once we get the kinks out of it. You're absolutely right, education is our number one priority, and we constantly look for other products and services that we can put out to the K-12 population and beyond. Thank you.
We've had great suggestions tonight, and it is a jewel. I would hate to see it fail, from my perspective, and things are different today than they were last year when we made a decision. But on the same hand, my recollection, some of the discussion was to, to offer seventy-five thousand and not give you any more in the additional years as an incentive to go out, work hard, and try to accomplish your mission on your own. I would like to see the strategic plan personally before I would agree to increase it more than it was. I think I could live with keeping it the same at this point, but to increase it without seeing the strategic plan, that I, I guess I would, I, I struggle with increasing when we have to cut, we, we still are cutting and we're still not replacing. And I, could you live with what we gave you till we see your strategic, strategic plan?
I think that's a wonderful compromise, Mr. Mayor. I think that would be, and as I look at my board members, I see their heads nodding. There's always been a partnership between the city and the Historical Society. They have been in this for the long haul. When I came to you earlier this spring, I told you that according to our records, we have contributed in staff, in hard cash and volunteer hours, four point seven eight million dollars. That's the collateral we put on the table. You're right, it isn't a loan agreement, it's a grant. We'd be glad to accept the seventy-five thousand dollars. We will come back to you in the fall with our strategic plan and our strategies going forward. And I know in speaking with the Historical Society, they wanted me to, to be very clear that they wish to have an ongoing dialogue, not only with city management, but with city council, to encourage you to bring your ideas, your concerns, and your requests, and, and constantly engage with them. They are available to you, and we have asked the board to have a more visible presence at regular council meetings, so the opportunity for casual conversation is there. We really want to see the city of Troy, this community thrive, and we really want to be an active partner in that process. So we, you know, the seventy-five thousand and coming back to you with a strategic plan is, is a very good compromise there.
Well, the Nature Center hasn't asked for an increase, and I just think it, I understand that it does take time, but when we were, where we were at last year, things were different, we didn't know what tomorrow was going to bring, but here we are today. So if we didn't take the seventy-five thousand, and we just took it and put it back in a general fund, I don't know what we're accomplishing there. What, what I think we're accomplishing is if we continue with what we did last year, we're not increasing the budget, and, you know, we continue the jewel that we do have, and we do wait for the strategic plan that we think is necessary, and piggybacking on Councilwoman McGinnis, we'd like to see some, some five-year plan, I think is, is what I would like to see.
That's our goal.
Councilman Henderson?
I like what the mayor had to say about the incentive last year was, you get seventy-five, and the next year you get nothing. So that, that should have been motivation to do what you could. And I understand, you know, going back to the teenager thing, you know, if every year they keep coming back, and well, I need a little bit more, and every time you give it to them, well, let's push the limits a little bit more, you know, in four years, are we looking at a two hundred thousand dollar grant to the historical museum? So, you know, I, I don't like to see the upward progression of funding for this type of a thing. I think a good compromise would be to do exactly as I mentioned earlier, and that's, you know, maybe, maybe give it another year, no more next year. But what, you, you said you were going to hire some, some more people, are any of those going to be charged with specifically going after grants and going after funding?
That's what a development specialist does.
And, and what do you think that's going to contribute to your, to your program? And further to that, if that individual is responsible for bringing in a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, what does that do to your overall budget, and are you going to still be coming back to us for another hundred grand next year because everything's increased exponentially?
I think the approach that Mr. Kishnik and his staff have taken are exactly what we want to do. We want to rebalance. One of the real wake-up calls that we had, as I separated as a city employee, for thirteen years, I had the benefit of a legal department, an engineering department, I could call on so many resources who were my colleagues in the city. I had the purchasing department who automatically took care of working major contracts. I had a business officer with, in the library, with Carolyn Easter. My bills automatically went to her, and they got paid. So we had to not only retool the Historical Society, but we had to put in place an operational management team. And it looks like a very old holy blanket right now. There are big gaps in it. And going through the strategic planning process, one of the things we realized is we have to have an operational management team that has those functions in it that we have never had before within the walls of the village. Having a development specialist, and I probably would not give them a dollar target, but rather a percent of revenue target, that we're aiming to get our revenue up another ten or fifteen percent, and, and work it that way. I don't think it's reasonable to say to somebody, bring in a hundred thousand dollars when, in new donations, when you don't have existing relationships in the community. Donations are built on relationships. People give to people, not to organizations. So part of what we have to do is to continue to build those relationships. Having a business manager on staff frees up some of my time so that I can go out and help build those relationships too, and not be tied in the office quite so much, so that I can be a more visible presence in our community, working with individuals and creating those relationships. I think one of the long-term goals that we have also is to develop a legacy giving program. When I was active with Michigan Audubon Society, every year we received between fifty and four hundred thousand dollars a year, just in gifts through estates. That doesn't happen overnight, but it has to begin somewhere, and that is a role for a development officer.
Councilwoman Teach?
Yeah, a question for Mr. Darling, Mr. Kishnik. The half reduction in the furlough hours, how much was that, how much did that cost the city?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand. At, at this point, last year, we said, we'll give you one more year, and, and we're in the same situation we were last year, asking for a strategic plan, being told we'll have a strategic plan in one year. And I think it's also a question of priorities for the city council. I mean, police, fire, roads, other city services. And for myself, I just think that a nonprofit that comes back after asking a group for money, and the group saying something precisely, and asking, saying for a strategic plan, not getting that strategic plan back, I, I don't know what sort of foundation hands, hands back the same amount of money with the promise that there'll be the strategic plan next year. So, you know, it's a question of priorities for me. I don't think I could look people in the eye around the city and say, well, we decided to keep furlough hours, especially when I've heard some of the concerning stories where we hired a new police officer, but they're on furlough, you know, last, last week. I mean, how, how can, how can I say, well, we're using your money for public safety as a priority? So I'm going to work with whoever's the appropriate person to bring an amendment to the proposed budget, to have the, whatever amount ends up being there, seventy-five thousand, hundred thousand dollars, put into reducing the furlough hours further. And when we vote on the budget, you know, I'd just like to bring that up for my own conscience sake, and I can be voted up or down, but I think you've got to take care of your priorities first, and I don't think we're at the point where we can say that's, that our priorities are taken care of. I think we're, we're shortchanging some of our priorities. So, you know, this, the third and fourth point I have was, you know, the fact that we don't have a three-year plan, a four-year plan, I mean, again, very concerning, and we can talk about ongoing dialogue, but at the end of the day, we've had a year, and I think we need to, we need to bring this up for a vote, up or down, and if I lose, but my idea fails, so be it. But I think that's something that the city council deserves to have an up or down vote on.
Well, I don't agree with, I mean, I don't disagree with that, but we don't do that in, in the study session, and if that comes up when you're voting. I think what Mr. Kishnik would like tonight, though, is some consensus direction to either keep it as it is, or increase it to a hundred thousand, and if we could come to some consensus on that, and then if a council member wants to propose an amendment to the budget when that vote comes up, that's certainly available. Is there any other discussion that we want to have with? My only comment to that is that, you know, we do have to set priorities, we have done that, but yet we still, we can't make every decision that we make based on giving back furlough time or doing other things. We, you know, it boils down to what kind of a city do you want? And in my humble opinion, I want a city that continues to have the historical museum and the Nature Center. So following that same line of thinking, we would have to deny the money to the Nature Center also. And at this point, I'm not ready to do that. I want to see the strategic plan, I want to see a five-year plan, and I'm willing to wait another six months till the summer to see that personally. So maybe if we could just come to a consensus to give direction to Mr. Kishnik tonight, I, I, I am proposing just leaving it the way it was for the next year personally. If we could go around the table and...
Which is seventy-five thousand.
Correct. No increase. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, I'd be willing to support your compromise. I mean, I just, just kind of looking at the big picture, and although the Nature Center and the Historical Society are not city departments anymore, they're clearly tied to the city, whether it's through history or through the fact that we're still going to be maintaining the buildings, and, you know, we've spent so much time with every other department, even though they were cut bare bones, we determined what would make them sustainable. We spent a lot of time and a lot of money reviewing that because we want them to be successful, they represent the city, and, you know, this is taking a little bit of a different course because we weren't able to do the same thing for this department, but I'm, I'm not at the point where I would want to cut it out completely, so I would give you direction for seventy-five, the same as last year.
I guess I would agree with that, leaving it seventy-five, you know, cutting from a hundred thousand to seventy-five thousand, but, but I would, you know, from running a small business for years, I would say that, first thing I would do is have somebody look at, look at the books. I mean, if, if only one person has had control of that, I would have two people, you know, go over that and see if there's anywhere else you can, you know, do some trimming. But yeah, I would agree with, you know, cutting it from a hundred to seventy-five thousand.
Mayor Proktoplantis?
I'm struggling with this one. I mean, I'd love to keep the, the Village Museum and Nature Center. I'm thinking more in line of the fifty thousand that we have. Every year, we've gone up, and the budget's going up now, a hundred thousand. But I think there needs to be another compromise.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, I think one of the important aspects of this is the fact that the oh-nine-ten budget was four hundred and thirty-one thousand, and that was completely city funded. And now we're at a point where, you know, we're, we're almost able to, to wheel that off the city books completely. So I, you know, I, I guess I'm inclined to say, yeah, let's, let's one more year, but at one point or another, the parents got to say, look, son, that's enough, move on.
I, I agree with that, and that's why it's important to see the strategic plan, see a five-year plan.
At what amount, do you, you had three figures tossed around here?
Fifty, seventy-five. You know, so I, I, I could probably be swayed towards the seventy-five, given it status quo. I'd like to see fifty, that way we get a nice progression downward and, you know, a little less reliance, but...
Well, I think you might be the fourth at seventy-five, so if you can live with that, if that's the direction then consensus we'll give to Mr. Kishnik at this point, unless Councilman Campbell wants to give us a call on...
You got the red phone?
The red phone. But Councilman Campbell did give me a direction in his commentary, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I, I...
I know you don't want to...
Saying that, I, I feel uncomfortable, but I think it's in line with sort of the compromise that's going around the table, with the exception of Mr. Teach, which it sounds like is different.
So we have a consensus for, for seventy-five, keeping it the same. And then when it comes to the vote, that can change. You know, and I, I don't want to cut anybody off here, but I don't really need to hear a presentation by the Nature Center. I think they're doing a great job, and if the consensus is status quo with the, again, you're asking for status quo?
Mayor, I just want to say, I think last year it was zero, I wasn't here.
It was status quo.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. It is...
Come on, come on up then.
I'm Carol Reed, and I am the executive director of the Troy Nature Society. I began last July as the executive director. We do have a little bit of slides here. What I basically want to tell you is that in fiscal year two thousand and ten, the city's operating budget for the Nature Center was approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, and at that time, there was seven to eight staff people. In two thousand and ten, when the planned closure of the Nature Center was announced, the budget went down to two hundred and sixty-three thousand, and there was about four to five staff people. The Nature Center, the society took over the Nature Center July of two thousand and eleven, and in our first year, we had a budget of fifty-four thousand, and that was with one staff person. That was it. We had one staff person managing our nature programs. In this fiscal year, we have, still have our Nature Center person, and we have now, I am there part-time, and we have one part-time person who also helps with instructing. So we have about a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and fifty volunteers. Those volunteers are ninety-nine percent of our workforce. We virtually, in this past eight months, have geared up with our programs. We are doing programs every week, public programs, school programs. One of the programs that we are proudest of is, for the third year, we are providing at-risk Title I students with summer programs from local elementary schools, a hundred and sixty students. Again, will be at our nature center this summer, and that whole program is underwritten by local, local corporations. We do a maple syruping event where over one thousand people attended this year. This was a wonderful event in collaboration with the historical society, and we have provided many, many school students and public programs also. In this fiscal year, we have, in the past fiscal year, we had over eighty-two hundred individuals that visited the nature center and participated in our programs. We are on target to, as of February, we surpassed that number. So, we feel that we are going to be having close to twelve thousand visitors and program participants visit our nature center. We are in need of funding to help us have a full-time executive director. This will allow us to apply for grants. As you know, many of the larger foundations do not let you apply if you don't have a full-time executive director. So, we're looking for funding that would help underwrite an executive director position to go full-time, and we also need added program people. We have, as I said, we have one program person who is doing all the programs for us. So, we have, as you know, the city survey showed that the community desperately desires trails and parks. We want to be, we are citizens of the community, and we want to partner with them, and we want to be able to provide educational nature and science programs to our communities. So, we're hoping that you'll consider our request, and our request was for fifty thousand.
So, the additional monies there, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, are the cost to maintain?
We don't have a slide like we had for the historical one?
No. Simply fifty thousand dollars.
Is that a recommendation from the city administration?
What was that, the fifty thousand?
Yes.
We recommended what, what was requested as, as a result of where we are now. I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, "I think there's some more work to be done." I'd ask maybe tonight, we've heard the conversation, let's, let us go back and get some additional budgetary information and put it together and bring it to you at a, at a different time.
Mayor Prokton Fleming?
Just a question. Two thousand twelve, that was a budget for personnel services in two thousand thirteen, thirty-three thousand, one hundred projected. Is that your actual expense?
Those are our costs. Again, like I said, the twelve, thirteen, fourteen are our costs for maintaining the, the grounds, the...
Okay.
And the eighty-five-four has fifty thousand in it as well.
Oh, okay. Right.
One initial comment, though, there was some initial funds to help start up in the beginning. It's above and beyond maintenance.
Okay, good. There was some.
Yeah, there was some funds, yes.
Mayor Prokton Fleming?
Just, just a, can you tell me how much money you generated in charging for things? How much revenue you've been able to generate?
Yeah, in this fiscal year, our programs have thus far raised twenty-two thousand. And we've done general donations, and, and that has been around thirty-seven thousand.
We're going to have another discussion on this. Is that what I'm hearing?
That was, yeah, the foundation was...
Right. I was...
I guess I don't understand this, this particular slide. What's their total operating budget? How much are they asking for?
This doesn't, this does not have their data on it. That's what I'm trying to say. This is only what is in the city budget that the city's responsible for, not the additional operating for their, you have five oh one C three?
So, so the fifty thousand that's, that's down here, that's, again, we're just adding it to the...
It's an eighty-five-four.
Right. To maintain the buildings and the properties, the thirty-three.
But is that a direct, I mean, thirty-three thousand is what it cost us last year?
Yeah.
So, now, it's going to cost us eighty-five. Is that...
No, it's going to cost us fifty if you give a fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollar donation plus the thirty-five.
So, our, so our donation would just further advance whatever maintenance...
Operations.
Operations.
Just like this.
Will we have this conversation detailed a little better or no, before we act on?
When would that be? About thirteen?
Yeah.
Is that what council would like to do? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I think it would be helpful if we had the additional information. I mean, I'm gathering, I think, the general idea of what it is, but it's important for us to see numbers.
Yeah, I'd like the slide, I like the slide that we had for...
Right. There was a slide last one that we submitted at the last...
During your annual presentation?
Yes, that's, that's where the information comes from the nature society. If we want, we can make sure that you...
I don't see any problem waiting until the thirteenth. And the nature center's just as important to me as the, the museum. So, I certainly want to, I would like to see that.
All right. We will do that.
Thank you.
So, moving to the DDA budget, and there was a lot of discussion, and Mayor, you were there with staff in the DDA at our last meet, last week's meeting, and the issue is, in this next fiscal year, the full use of the surplus funds, reserve funds will be exhausted. And that's shown on this slide here, that when you take in two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars and you have debt service of three-point-three, after you use the reserves of three-point-one, it's remaining deficit of a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. So, what, what we are asking for in this fiscal year budget from the DDA is a, in the revenue, a contribution from the general fund in the amount of a hundred-and-twenty thousand, two oh seven, for the next fiscal year, to make sure that this budget is balanced. And that would do, first of all, you have to write, if you write any note, you have to write this note. Our goal is to avoid default, and we've said that from the beginning, avoid default. So, this, doing this would avoid default, but we're not asking for, necessarily for the funds to pay for the debt service, because we, I'm putting together a plan that I've already had conceptually, that will be presented at the May DDA meeting, that identifies some short-term cash opportunity as well as a long-term financial strategy for the DDA to increase the capture long-term, and there, and, and many other components of that plan that will be discussed. But basically, there's a short-term need for cash for the DDA, and there's an opportunity to do that that we're exploring. So, that would preclude the use of this contribution. But to adopt the budget, we, we need some vehicle to be able to show that it's been balanced. So, that's why we're doing that tonight, without getting into the, the whole financing, the whole plan for the DDA. Yeah, but, but that is... If personal property tax wouldn't have been eliminated, it'd been a lot easier to do this. But it's, it's complic, it really complicated it severely, and so, we're working through that with the Michigan Municipal League. Senator Papa George's office has been very, very helpful in giving us information. But, but, you know, I got here in November, and in December, that's when it happened, and so now, the fallout of that is, is, is coming to fruition, and the work groups haven't pursued or implemented their recommendations yet. So, that's where, that's why it's in the, the status that it's at. But it's put us into a difficult position now with adopting a budget.
Well, could I just, I, I was at the meeting, and quite frankly, I'm the one that, that told the board that I personally could not vote in favor of the DDA budget if it showed a deficit, showed us being in default. So, I personally didn't want to see that, and I didn't want to bring that back to council showing that we were going to default in November. So, we, we are putting together a plan that I think is going to solve the problem, but we are, we are going to have to vote on a budget at, at some point before November. So, from a personal standpoint, I just think it would look better for the city and, and everyone involved that we show that we are not going to be in default in November, and then let the plan go forward. It's actually going to be, I think it's going to show some initiative by the city that, we want to find a solution, that we do not want to show a default. So, it got tabled from the DDA, and it's my hope that you would agree with me that it's important that we don't pass a budget showing us being in default in November. And if you want to add...
Yeah, let me add one more thing because you raised a good point. Our intent is not to use the funds, in case there's any question about that. But if we do have to use the fund, the intent is to draft a plan where it would be repaid. So, the intent is, this is, this is not a foundation grant. This is, this is, but, but, you know, I, I just will go on record right now as saying, you know, talking about a business, you're talking about a foundation, a grant given a, or a foundation given a grant. So, this, you know, the DDA is appointed by the city council, a budget's approved by the city council. This isn't a redheaded stepchild. This is a, a part of the city as a component unit. So, it's, it's our due diligence to make sure that everybody is, is coming along to, for the city of Troy. So, I'm sorry.
Councilman Teetz?
When, when do we see a plan or the plan?
Like I said, it's coming in May.
We saw, we saw part of the plan in the, if I could...
No, sure.
We, we just put three new members on the board that are probably, in my humble opinion, three of the best financial minds and businessmen that Troy has, and they are now part of the DDA and will be part of the solution that comes back to City Council as a recommendation. So, I think it's, it's just, they're new members. I think they need some time to, to go over the plan that was presented. There was some feedback from the DDA back to Mr. Kishnik to maybe tweak the plan a little bit and maybe do a little more research on a couple of issues, and I think he's preparing to do that, and then go back to the board again, and the board will ultimately make a decision if they, they like the solution, if they like the plan, and then make a recommendation back to this council, who will then ultimately vote on whether you accept that or you don't. But some of that is still in the negotiation phase. It's, it's a great start, you know, the plan that was presented is a great start, and I, I, I think it's going to be a great solution to the problem personally.
There are negotiations that are, that are ongoing. There is the personal property tax, you know, issue that's becoming clearer, but will get clear, which is why I continue to say we need a short-term solution, and then we need the longer-term solution that will, that the, the specifics of that long-term solution will become clearer and clearer with, with time because of the personal property tax issue, number one, the economy, number two, but we're not, this isn't about the economy. This is simply about the mechanics of personal property tax elimination.
Personally, I think that hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is really never going to probably come out of, out of the general fund, hopefully. It's just a paper issue at this time to make it look like we're not, we're not okaying a budget that's going to default, basically. I think...
And, and then you just amend the budget when that goes through?
You mean amend it out?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, mid seventh, mid, mid, mid-May, though.
Mid-May? Prior, prior to voting on the budget?
No.
When's the, it's the...
Twenty?
Twenty, twentieth?
Well, the thing you have to understand is that the DDA, this is going to be presented to them, and they may want another meeting to decipher and dissect the plan. I think it could be a little while before it actually comes back to council. So, I'm confident that a couple of months, maybe, it would come back.
And this is a project that can keep going on. That's, that's the whole, that's the point we have.
Councilman Teetz?
I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the, I had a question, but I realized my question's kind of irrelevant because it's, it's a, it's a plan that can't be disclosed or still working on negotiation details and so forth?
It's not finalized, so it's almost impossible to really talk about the plan because it could, it just needs to be tweaked, I think, is, is my impression, but...
Well, but there are negotiations that are, you know, I'm having right now with private individuals to make the attempt to, for a cash infusion that I'd rather not even be discussing at this level right now. But just what I've said all along is I think there's an alternative revenue source in the short term, and, and so that needs to materialize. And the long-term plan has a lot of, has, you know, some steps to it.
And if, and if you accomplish that, then we don't need this.
But we need this temporarily.
But we need it on paper. What we need, and I hate to, you know, I hate to sound like this, we, we need a balanced budget, Mayor.
I needed it on paper because I could not consciously vote on a, on a budget that would put us in default. So... Mayor Prokton Fleming?
Yeah, just to be clear, Mayor, and Mr. Darling here, this will be an amendment to the budget we've seen so far. This is not reflected in what we, we've seen. So, when we get to new budget, if we have a consensus around the table, this hundred-and-twenty will be coming out, the fund balance, basically, in the general fund so that it can be there to pay this down in case it's needed.
Exactly.
So, it's just not reflected. Most everything else we've talked about tonight, maybe with one exception of some capital, everything we've talked about, this, this is going to be an amendment to what we've got in this package.
That, that's correct, and I think later on, we'll see, kind of summarize these little items and putting those together.
Okay.
Councilman Henderson?
One last thought. As a matter of fact, that's what this slide is all about, and some of the things that we've already talked about, and so, we'll get to that in just a second.
Councilman Henderson?
Just one, one last thought on, on the tax capture in our forecast. Do we have any, what's a three-year, five-year plan look like?
That's what we're putting together. That's, that's, you know, this shows nothing but...
This is where we're at.
But then, you fall to November. It shows in the... A negative capture is, is what it amounts to the next year, but...
We see that going up.
Yeah, but if that's what Mr. Councilman Teetz is talking about, he's like, "What is the plan then?" That is the plan, to effectuate a, a positive capture. How are you going to do that? That's, that's what we're working on.
I guess further to that, the, the plan that you're working on is, is one way, but is there a natural increase in that tax capture on the horizon?
No.
Short-term?
No.
How long?
If you saw the number, long, long-term.
No.
You have to take some steps to do it, to, to make it happen, and that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Yeah.
Another question about calendar. When, so the public will see a calendar or a plan or a solution in June, July? Is that what we're talking about?
What are we talking, what?
I, as far as, so a solution to the DDA issue?
You know, I, I honestly, council member, I apologize, but there are so many components to this thing. I got here in November, it's been five months when you do the math. You know, this, this problem is, is major. This problem is, is nationwide on the radar screen. So, I would be remiss if I said I'm going to have it by June and it's going to be good, especially when personal property tax put a kink in the whole thing. So, I, I think, though, what, what I'm, what I'm moving toward is, because some things are coming together... coming together, is this summer, we had, early summer even, midsummer, we have something that we're moving forward with the necessary steps that need to happen. And one of which is meeting with the DDA last week and then the next couple of months and getting it to the city council with, you know, your participation in the, part of the solution to the problem.
Just to add what Mr. Kishnik was saying, but there will be a required process which the public will be notified, it's very detailed in state law. So that it will be public. In fact, it will have to be public hearings.
You mean the plan?
Yeah.
Is that, is that your question, will it be public?
Yes, it will be public, but there will be.
All DDA meetings are going to the public.
So in, in May, people would have a.
All, all DDA.
I heard you, the first one. But in May, that DDA meeting, there'll be some sort of development.
And in the follow-up, if the development plan would have to be amended, which it probably will have to be, then it'll be, I believe, at least two public hearings and a public comment hearing. So it's very, very stringent.
Well, without getting into, you've got a development plan, you've got a financing plan, and you have the DDA itself, the establishment, all three are going to have to be amended. Okay, so there's a lot of pro, without, you know, unless you want to know, you know, the plan tonight, I can tell you. But it's, it's a lot of process that the state law, like Mark's talking about, requires to go through. But initial staff will be May, you know, as an open meeting here to hear the components of it.
I think all we're asking tonight is if we could just paper transfer the $120,000 to the budget and allow the process to continue with Mr. Kishnik putting together a plan and have a meeting with the DDA board and try to accomplish that as quickly as possible and get it back to council, Councilman Teetz?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
If, is the DDA meeting before the vote on the budget, the 20th?
It's Thursday.
I don't know that.
I don't really push this.
I thought the next DDA meeting was on the 23rd.
Yeah, I think so. I'm trying to. It's the third Wednesday, and I don't have my good phone.
You got the dinosaur.
Yeah.
Where's the 22nd?
If you're willing to meet with me internally, before that, if you would like, at any time.
Is there consensus to, to give direction to Mr. Kishnik to do this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So here's the budget changes, the volunteer firefighter incentive program to fund what we talked about here. It would be an additional $78,000 for every year we would need to, and this is Mayor Protem, I mean, this is what you were talking about. DDA budget increase, $120,000 just for 2014 only. Planning commission, education and training, we talked about adding $3,500 to make that, I think it was $6,000, Mark, so, in the budget for, for planning, planning commission. Is that acceptable? The capital fund, then, we would be asking to carry over local digital computer replacement of $150,000. Chief, did you want to talk about that?
There was approved $150,000, it's a $300,000 project that we thought we'd be able to start in this budget year. It was approved last year, $150,000, $150,000, we're asking for in the 2014. Clemus, which runs the county computers, they're not available yet, they're not coming in until the 2014 budget year, so we're asking to carry over the $150,000 to cover the $300,000 that's going to take to put new digital computers in every one of our control vehicles.
Okay, so it's carryover. This, the, the local development finance authority met, which I am not a member, I'm just a public, but Mark is a member on that, and they approved $52,000 for slab replacement along Big Beaver around the Smart Zone. Correct. Mark, is there anything to add to that?
Well, it's just basically from, from John R. West to about the entrance of Bellingham in that general area, slab replacement.
So this is coming from the LDA raise money to the capital fund. But we have to make these amendments as we go through the process, so I want everyone to be aware of them if there's any problems. Trends and summaries, I'll get through this pretty quickly. The, this is the, this is sort of the wrap-up. Our focus, besides the 12 strategies, including some of these is DDA bonds, personal property elimination is a, is a big issue as it relates to the DDA for sure. Infrastructure investment, we talked about a million dollars in Mr. Hutter's projects that he added to the general fund that would do more roadwork. Employee programs, and I think that's been touched on tonight, is sort of an employee focus, which is sorely needed here. And we need to continue to create an environment for investment, which, you know, there's, there's activity every day trying to, these guys, Glenn and Mark and even some people on council doing economic development, trying to, you know, get businesses to expand and take old dilapidated buildings and make them vibrant in Troy again. And I think you're seeing a lot of that around the community. But there's a lot of work that goes into that, that these guys are doing and are going to continue to do. And we need to continue to educate, rebalance and progress, which has kind of been my theme all the way through this budget process. I wanted to show you the fund balance summary of the general fund one more time, just in case there were any questions on it. But you could see, yes, there is a projection to use fund balance, but it still is at a very healthy rate, and we still will focus on infrastructure. And the city of Troy, I think you'll find, as we go through, it shows the work that we're going to do, and we will be committed to making these numbers and doing what we have to do to, to create a rebalance and an equilibrium in our, in the financial structure of the city. That's the unassigned fund balance. If you look in terms of charts, which that's enough of that.
Councilman Pennington, do you have a?
No.
Sorry.
No, I didn't. Actually, I do have a question. Now, is that similar, Councilman Fleming, to the change in the chart from last year? I mean, like the chart, we talked about earlier, was that chart?
Was drastically different.
Yes.
It showed us in a, in a negative position, not really having fund balance. We were going to be bankrupt. The projection was we were going to be bankrupt in five years.
Right.
And I think, we all sit at this table, knew that, said this council will not let that happen, this administration will not let that happen. But I think we were very conservative in budgeting. I agree with that, that, that policy of being conservative. And the actions that were taken and the early retirement and so forth, that's the reason we're seeing this. And just, and basically just based on conservative budget in addition to that. But I sat here as a councilperson last year, as one person, and I didn't believe a number for one minute that we were going to be bankrupt, but that made the headlines. So we turned color.
Now, seeing this.
But we're still using, still going in the wrong direction.
Right.
We're still going in the wrong direction, but last year we were going in the wrong direction and we're already negative.
Well, a year later though, does this surprise you seeing this?
I think last year, I said at this table, I didn't believe it then. I didn't believe it was going to be that bad then, based upon projections that we had and things that I thought would be happening. I liked this much better and I did not believe the number and basically took a position on that last year. I thought we were being very, very conservative.
Last year, you know, you were projecting for the end of '12 to, to basically be about, even not bring $6 million down to the bottom line.
Exactly.
So that's got, you know, that's up by $6 million plus.
Yeah.
So, again, from the.
You can consider over and the. And argue whether it was going to be or not, but if you take away the $6 million and take away the vacancies.
Right.
We are pretty much down. And that just brings me up to another point, if I could, while we're talking about fund balance. The councils before always use 10% to 15% as a benchmark. Quite frankly, after everything we've been through and the discussions that we've had, I believe that's way too low. And I don't know what, what does it take to change our philosophy? I feel much more comfortable at 25 in 2018, quite frankly, than I do at 10 to, 10 to 15%. And I know the county operates at 42% or 45%. The state of Michigan recently, I think, is operating on a much higher fund balance percentage. But do you need some direction from council that we've?
I think I've kept fund balance up here on enough different screens to keep the conversation alive. I think we'll take it back and put some, put a report together and bring it to council at a future meeting, just to make sure that, we don't think 10 to 15 as a stat is enough. I said the last meeting, the 12% is old school. And you've weathered probably one of the, the storm of the half-century, if you will, and look, look what the numbers were. And so, you know, with that as a guide, you don't want to plan for the worst-case scenario because that's what you're saying, it happened last year. But it, it can't happen in a year or two, three basis. And trying to get back up with proposal A now and not a lot of greenfield development space left with big numbers, it's, it's not easy. So you need a larger fund balance for, for those reasons alone.
And we don't know what personal property tax is going to do to the city yet. But we know one thing, it's not going to be positive.
Councilman Teetz?
This, this year we're using $500,000 in fund balance. Is that correct or am I?
For the 2014 budget, this is using about $600,000.
Remember that, David? Yeah. We haven't shown that slide as much, maybe. Okay, so, with the millage rates, and, you know, we talked about this a little bit, the millage rates are, are all staying the same. The proposal for the refuse is to go 1.05 to 1.09. The debt was proposed last year, approved last year, as I told, at .75. It is not going to be levied at .75 as per last year's approval. It is .70. So, so the change from last year to this year is the same, you know, is relatively the same. So we are seeing millage rates that are.
Yeah.
Even, let's just say.
If I can just say, we approved the mills for the 2014 budget last year as part of the 13 budget to be 10.57. So we've actually come down from what we approved last year, 500 some basis of a mill.
Because of the debt. All right? Water sewer rates, not increasing. But I said that it's not common that they don't increase, so, so it is no increase there. Staffing levels, we did add a few positions. We deleted one position, but the two are in police and three in library. So that's, it's pretty targeted staff development, staff increase. Revenues and expenditures look to be evening out in terms of where you were in '08 at 62 million and then hitting the bottom of 45. That was with a lot of vacancies though. So now we're trying to, we're trying to find our balance at 52, 50, you know, the 52, 53 range going forward, just as a benchmark. Taxable va, total taxable value seems to, looking out to 2017, 15, 16, 17, you can see we're starting to see, project a little uptick. And I think that makes Mino nervous when he starts to see numbers like that. But, but he's, you're seeing it in the residential market, you're going to continue to see that next year and the year after because of the two-year sales study. So I told Mino I wouldn't talk about how to do assessing tonight, but you can see this going up in, in a positive direction in Troy. So personal property tax, obviously, we're projecting the slide though. And finally, building permit activity. I'd be remiss if you, this is single-family, new single-family residences, 2010, we had 40-some, and now, then you had 2011, 50, let's just say 50-some, and you're up over 100, and the value's in blue. That is only new single-family residences. That's not any commercial companies coming into the office buildings in Troy. Only new homes. So you, you really did hit a bottom back in, you know, '09, '10. And you can see this is on the upswing in a positive direction. That's our budget presentation. All right, if there's any questions? Further questions, please?
Questions? Great job, especially for your first time with us, but I think everybody would agree that presentations were good, having the meetings beforehand. I think Councilman McGinnis was instrumental in that. And from my perspective, great job, made it very easy for, for me anyways. And thanks to Alan for doing such a great job.
The staff does a great job here, Mayor. I'm going to tell you, you know, there's only so much one person can do, but with, when you have 25 people, they do a great job. And so there's nothing that can't be accomplished with this group.
A lot of the feedback that I've gotten on the study sessions and the professionalism of staff and giving the presentations, I know that makes your job a lot easier also. Questions, any questions? Just once again, I will let the public know that the budget is available for review at the city clerk's office, the Troy Public Library, and on the city's website, www.troymi.gov/budget. So our next order of business is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? Please come forward, give your name and speak into the microphone if you would.
Yeah, Mr. Warkowski. I was up there Monday, and the only reason I came up Monday because I was so pleased with the Monday session. And I vowed I wasn't going to come up again tonight, but for a different reason I decided I still need to. Then when Mr. Kishnik kicked off these wonderful sessions a few weeks ago, and, you know, the first thing I saw was what kind of city do we want to be? And I think you all really need to think about that because I'm a compassionate conservative, and I know all about the priorities of police, fire, roads and what have you. But cities also need some cultural stuff. And I, I think Troy is falling down on it a little bit. You know, there are a lot of people that would have thrown the library under the bus, and fortunately, a lot of people saved that. Seems to me that there's some people now that would soon throw the museum and the nature center in the bus. You know, folks, Troy doesn't have a downtown, we don't have a trail system, we don't have dog parks. They're, you know, it's a wonderful place, but we're missing some things, folks. And, you know, you act like you're doing the nature center and the museum a favor or something. They're doing us a favor. We need that stuff. If you want to draw people in here, you need a dog park, you need a museum, you need the nature center, you need the library, you need all this stuff. So folks, please, you know, before you do the budget, think about it. And think about giving Lorraine $100,000 and nature center the $50,000 that they wanted and give those folks a chance. You know, I was in relationship sales. Lorraine talked about how you need to build relations with people to get the money from them and stuff. I was in large system sales. That's what we did. It wasn't slam, man, thank you, man. You need some time to build those relationships. Give these folks a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being so passionate. Anybody else wish to speak this evening? There are none? We are in Germany. Thank you all for coming.